So audio's on, alright? Oh, actually, it is seven o'clock, so.
Perfect.
I'll mean the order. We'll have a pledge of allegiance led by trustee Simpson, the flag in the back corner.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. First on the agenda, good news, Mr. Hildrely.
Just a reminder to the board, the gallery, the community, a very important fundraiser comes up this weekend on May 14th, the CLC May Mingle is their primary fundraiser for the year, Community Learning Connections is in the schools in a variety of different ways through programming and support, and its organization is closely connected to our mission, so we want to support that, encourage everyone to find their website and purchase tickets, or you can purchase tickets at the door and hopefully come out and support the group. There are a variety of local food establishments that will be there providing food, and many organizations, including within the school district, have provided gift baskets with different themes and amounts of things that will be there for a bid auction, and then there'll be a live auction for some of the larger items in the evening. It's a lot of fun, music, and activities throughout the evening, but the main event is the fundraising support that CLC receives. So that's at the KMC Golf Club. I believe the doors open at six o'clock with food available for about two hours and then auction items to follow, so hope you all can be there.
Well, they're supposed to be good.
Yes, yeah, it does look favorable after a long and drowned out winter. Things have turned.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Rick. And according to Open Meeting Act, we do have the public comments available on agenda items. I don't know, anybody from public? I don't see anyone, okay? Move on to the board agenda, revisions and approval agenda. The only thing that I'd like to just change is, and I realize this, talking with Rick earlier today after that publishes agendas, I'd like to switch the order of the discussion items. I'd like to talk about result and future options first, because basically based on that, we may or may not need to have a discussion about refunding. So I don't know if we need to vote on that or not, but I guess we might as well better say since, sorry.
I can make a motion to do that.
Yeah.
I move that we move the bond result and future options to be on the agenda prior to bond refunding.
I'll say. We move second to change the order of the discussion items and put bond results and future options first. Roll call, Christie Brooks.
Aye.
Christie Davis.
Aye.
Christie Lewis.
Aye.
Christie Moore.
Aye.
Christie Simpson.
Aye.
Christie Tomlin.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so we will move those around. I will now, does anybody else have any suggested revisions? If not, I'll accept the motion to accept the modified agenda, so moved.
Second.
We moved in second and to accept the revised agenda, roll call vote, trustee Tomlin.
Aye.
Trustee Simpson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Christie Lewis.
Aye.
Christie Davis.
Aye.
Christie Brooks.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the agenda is approved. Reports, we'll start right off with Ms. Fulton with a third grade reading report, I mean, we have, I believe we have a presentation here, so I'm gonna move around if I can see.
Can you see, Greg?
Yeah.
Alright, so tonight we are going to present the Read by Third Grade Law. Jamie Fulton, principal at Patterson, Lisa Shirk, principal at Herrick Park, Brittany Wolf, she's reading specialist at Herrick Park, and Elizabeth DeMullen, she is reading specialist at Patterson.
Jamie should have the microphone.
Oh, yeah.
For our listening view or watching view.
So what is the Read by Third Grade Law? So it was put in place to bring the school teachers and parents together as a team to improve reading. If a student is more than one year behind grade level in reading, then the student is subject to retention. That doesn't necessarily mean the student will be retained, it just means that they are subject to retention, and we will get into that a little bit more. Tonight, I did want to tell you that we are just presenting about the third grade reading law. In June, we will give you all the data for the reading specialist for our assessments, and we will go through our K4 data. So all of that's coming in June, tonight is just about the third grade reading law. In the fall, we must give all students, Y5 through third grade, an initial assessment within the first 30 school days. If we see that any student falls below, then we go ahead and give them an extensive assessment after that to see, we want to triangulate our data, we want to see, are they below in specific assessments to make sure that we can see the whole child and not just one snippet of that child. From there, we say, yes, if they are behind in two or more of those areas or assessments, then we will give them an I-RIP, and we will go into that as well. Again, we have 30 school days to give those assessments. After we say, yes, they are behind, we have 30 more school days than to write an I-RIP and send it home to parents. Our initial assessment is given three times a year. After those initial assessments, we always give that extensive assessment as well.
Jamie, are the, I'm sorry, is it okay to just bark out?
Yeah, absolutely.
Who gives that, who gives the assessment then and comes up with the I-RIP? Is that, is that the reading specialist?
The teacher will give the first assessment, and then the reading specialist will come in and do a second assessment.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Absolutely.
Do parents come in for the meeting, or you just send the report?
We send it home, and then we also send a read at home plan, so that parents have material at home that they can do with students as well. We usually send these home right around conference time, so it usually goes home with report card with the conference, it usually, it falls in place with that so that we can really have the conversation with parents. What is an I-RIP? I have Lisa step in.
Right, what is an I-RIP? It is an individualized reading improvement plan. It's given to students and young fives through third grade, and the purpose is really to make that plan and describe the specific interventions that are going to take place for that child. It's got to be done within the first 30 days after the assessment, 30 school days. An I-RIP is created by the teacher, the reading specialist. Oftentimes, our district literacy coaches will help out with that as well, they might be the person helping out, give the intervention with the student. The special education teacher might be part of that discussion as well, as well as the building administrator. An I-RIP talks about the interventions that the student's going to receive in addition to the classroom instruction.
So when we do the I-RIPS, we have our data meetings, and we look across the board, so it's not just the data. Sometimes they'll be right on the cusp, and the teacher will say, you know, on all of these assessments, they're doing really great, I think we need to watch them before putting them on an I-RIP. Or they'll say, no, I really think they need to be on that I-RIP, even though they're only below in one, I think that having all these supports. And in the I-RIP, we'll go through that as well, we go together and we say, tier one is the classroom instruction, what is the teacher doing in small groups? So we make the overarching goal for the student. And tier one, the teacher will do the interventions, and then sometimes we'll say, oh, they need a tier two intervention as well. So then the reading specialist may come in and say, okay, I'm going to work on the exact same goal, but I'm going to do it a little differently. If we need a tier three, sometimes the reading specialist will pull one-on-one, again, all of this is small groups, the teach, the reading specialist may say, you know, I'll do a one-on-one or a two-on-one, or we will have the research manager come in and do this as well. Every six to eight weeks, we come back together and we look at all the progress monitoring. Everybody progress monitors every two weeks, so we have all the data to say, is this working or not? And if it's not, then we need to change the intervention.
So you can see here an example of an I-RIP, an individualized reading intervention plan, and...
This is not what the parent gets, or it is what the parent gets. And is there some kind of code or some kind of explanation that goes along with it so that they would understand more specifically what they needed to do?
Yep, absolutely.
And this is, if you see at the top, the other one, this is a Lenoy County I-RIP, so the all, the county's using the same thing. So if they come in from any other school district in our county, we can get this right through our system, and it goes right into C60 at the end of the year as well.
Alright, I'm gonna turn it over for the M-Step.
Oh, that's me. We're currently in the process of administering our M-Step, our state spring assessment, and that window's gonna be closing up soon, as soon as we button up all the makeup tests, we will get the scores. And the COT score that we're looking for for third grade is the 1252. If a student scores below 1252, the parents will receive a letter from SEPI, and that is the Center for Educational Performances and Information, and they're the agency that just collects and secures our data for the M-Step. They'll be giving the parents a letter that lets them know that their student has scored below the 1252 and will be subject to retention. Please know that we are already in action as a district before the parents get that letter. We will make sure that they get a letter from Mr. Hildrely, and that letter, if I could do this, okay, that letter just makes the parents aware that they have a right to the process of requesting a good cause exemption, okay? And what that means is, is that a parent has the right to say, I don't think my child needs to be retained at this time. They, it could be, and also the teachers have a right to say that as well. So it could be because they have an IEP, they have a 504 plan, possibly their child is an English language learner and hasn't been instructed in English language in the three years. It could be that they've already been retained, and that they've already had all of our supports provided, and that the parent feels that they just don't need to be retained again. It could also be that they've been very successful in their math and science and social studies in the general ed classroom, and that the teacher has prepared a portfolio that says, this is why this student shouldn't be retained. So you see, we have all these processes in place to support the student in deciding whether or not they need to be retained or to move on to fourth grade. So once all that information is gathered, Mr. Hildrely will look over all the good cause exemption documents provided by the parents, provided by the teachers, he may even talk to the IEP team, and just make that final decision on whether or not that good cause exemption will be granted, okay? And so again, we have all that support in place, letting us know that it's the best decision to move that student on to fourth grade. But what happens then, might be the question, is if a student is retained in third grade? And that's going to be the topic of our next conversation with Brittany. So they have processes in place as well, if you have a student that ends up being retained in third grade because the parents and the teacher and everyone feels it's in their best interest, that student has to be assigned to a highly effective teacher, or if there isn't one, just the highest rated third grade teacher or a reading specialist that following year. They have to be provided evidence-based reading programs, they also have to receive daily targeted one-on-one instruction, an intervention that's explicit and systematic, and that also includes having progress monitoring throughout that entire school year to show that you're tracking what you're doing with them for reading, that they're making growth, and that they will be ready to move on that next year. If they are retained in third grade though, that first year, and then they still don't pass that score, they move on to fourth. There's not, you stay in third grade forever until you get this, it's just a one-time thing. If they score below that 1252, and we had one student last year, we had three, two left the district, we had one that scored below on his M-Step at the end of the year, he was promoted to fourth grade, so he was assigned to a highly effective fourth grade teacher this year in our building. I also worked with him all throughout this school year, doing reading interventions. On our Fanta's and Pennell assessment that we give, he scored at grade level on that, which is the one where they have to read and answer questions, so that was something, but then we were able to look at that other assessment that we give, at some of his reading things and skills that he needed, and so we built a targeted plan for him to address those in our daily interventions. And I have his preliminary scores back from the end of the year for his M-Step, and he scored at grade level on all three of the reading areas for this year. Yeah, so he definitely was ready to be promoted to fourth grade and just struggled on that test at the end of third. Same thing for them too, for third, it's the same for third and fourth, their additional reading instruction has to be outside of their regular ELA time, they can't be pulled from their classroom instruction for that extra support, it has to be a different time of the day.
So if you would like information about the Read by Third Grade Law, you can come to my office and we'll talk. I'd be happy to talk about it, anytime. I have a lot of documentation, I have a lot of articles, and I would be happy to sit and just go through it if you have it.
So often it isn't the percentage by number of students or percentage, how many students you have in I-RIP?
We...
Very low, 50%.
It's around 25%, I think, right now for our third graders that are on an I-RIP, but those are kids that are just maybe even one level below on their reading level, so we give them this I-RIP so that we can show that we've been tracking this, supporting them all year, so if they by chance get to the end and don't score high enough, we can say, we've been doing all these things, and we have all this data to show that even though they didn't do well on this one assessment, this child is ready to move on to the next grade level.
Has it been 25% every year, or is that percentage going down?
I would say it's pretty steady.
Yep, that's average.
Is it possible we could do to have that percentage lower, or is it something 34%?
That's all grades except test. You can be an I-RIP, I have an I-RIP plan in first grade, right?
Correct. Correct, yes, yes.
Also, you're ready.
Do you want, Devin, do you want this off?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, and as always, thanks for your hard work with our students. Next is technology report.
I don't have that kind of energy. Mine's boring. I just got a bunch of numbers, so just interrupt me if you have questions. We are currently managing about 2,300 Chromebooks. We have looked at 600 Chromebook devices this year due to problems. Of those, about 140 have extreme physical damage that required replacement. There were 30, 35 that had other issues, battery problems, bad screens, things like that that just go wrong. So floating around a 6% to 7% damage rate, which is actually pretty good, most districts see 10% to 15%, so I think we're doing pretty good on that. Tablets, we are running low on the Chrome tablets. We've replaced 50 broken screens this year, those are not parts that we can currently order, those are phased out, so Chrome tablets are hard to get, we may need to look at iPads, other solutions like that. The good news is we have about 60 iPads in circulation, and Steven was kind enough to return and help us implement Apple Management Device program called JAMF, so we can now manage iPad devices like the Chrome OS devices. If a teacher needs an app installed, we can do it from centralized place, we don't have to go onsite and do that, we can just stream apps right to iPads.
Just to remind the board, if you're not aware, the Chromebooks are something that we use grades three through 12.
Yes.
The tablets are pre-K through second grade.
Yes. One big change we would like to make next year is doing away with the device insurance or the device protection program. Only 231 people bought it this year, most of the damage we see is not what we would consider accidental, so we're, we're planning on not offering that next year. Hopefully, that's a break for the community, if a device isn't damaged, if a student gets a device and keeps it, there will be no charge. If a device is damaged, they will pay actual replacement parts.
They might treat it better. I said those who have problems might treat it better once they get that repair bill.
We're hoping so, we're hoping, yes. Another big change is implementing an asset tracking program. This year, we tracked everything in Excel and Google Sheets, and we have about 98% accuracy, far better than we've tracked before, but we're buying a purpose-built tracking solution for the Chromebooks that'll let us track and document the repair history, device history. That way, we know if a student gets a used device, that they may not be responsible for damage that has occurred in the past. So if we have to switch a device out, we have a full history on that device, so we'll be implementing that this summer. General issues, we've closed about 1,000 tech ticket issues this year. One note is we're running a little bit low on teacher laptops. I know with the bond not passing, that we're not having that financial discussion for hardware yet, but it's out there. These laptops that we bought are good, but they may have a three-to-five-year lifespan, so we need to start considering, you know, what's down the road.
So were they all bought at once?
The last round of laptops were, yes, and that was 200.
So we bought 200 laptops last time, and how old are those?
They're about a year old now.
And is that 200 cover all, I mean, that's in Colorado, teacher, so?
We have some refurbished laptops that we use for other purposes.
Average life cycle is what?
Hopefully, three to five years. They are currently Windows 11 compatible, although our district is not, we're moving in that direction, but we're fond of Windows 10 right now, just for security reasons. We know a lot more about Windows 10. Infrastructure-wise, this is where it gets a little more serious, so we have a good network, sits on a 10 gigabit fiber optic backbone, good connection through the consortium. We currently have about 200 access points in all six buildings, they are three to five years old, good shape right now, but in three to five years, it's going to be a different story. We need to start planning for the obsolescence of that, including the nearly 50 switches that we currently have that are 10 to 12 years old. The majority of our switches are going to reach end-of-life in October of 2025. So that is a change that's looming out there as well. As we upgrade the hardware, we should also talk about re-cabling the buildings. We're currently mostly Cat 5 or Cat 5E cable in the internal walls, and we should upgrade to Cat 6 or 6A, which puts up to 10 gigabit a second internal traffic, much, much faster than what we have, tenfold increase.
When we upgrade that, is that your department, or we contract that out?
We would contract that out. It would take my team of four, probably a calendar year to do that, there are miles and miles of cable in this building alone.
Do we need miles of cable now with Wi-Fi, and wouldn't it be cheaper to put some better Wi-Fi signals through the building?
Absolutely, so the, the access points still have to connect back to the switches, so we could re-cable just those, but yes, should we re-cable all the wall ports? Some of them are necessary for the phone systems, the cameras are all on that internal system, so there is an amount that would have to be re-cabled. Would we re-cable everything? No. And we're working with a company right now to try to scope that out, it is a huge project, so...
Put a dollar value to it.
I couldn't even guess, honestly.
No, I mean, you're working with somebody to try to put a dollar value?
Yes, yes.
And then you'll roll it into some kind of schedule and...
Then it would go into an RFP, yes.
Well, you know, when, when Tom Hawkins comes here, he talks about, we asked for a plan, right?
Yep.
Infrastructure plan, or for the building plan, so we, I guess, hopefully you're starting to work on that, because, I mean, in a plan, this many laptops a year, this many Chromebooks a year, this much, this building, you know, because we maybe not do all the buildings at once, right? I mean, and what buildings need have what, it'd be nice to have that plan.
Yeah, put a dollar value and put it into the budget.
Yep, yep, we're working on the schedule for that.
How much of those items were addressed in the bond issue?
Pretty much everything.
Yeah.
It would have been addressed in the, in the, at the bond issue?
I believe so, yes. Cabling the buildings is a little bit more difficult, because it would have to be done off-hours, possibly over summer, it's absolutely possible, but yes, that would have been addressed. That would have solved a lot of our problems.
Have you ever looked at getting away from the laptops and doing maybe Raspberry Pis and VM, and the cloud for staff and so forth?
Yep, so the Raspberry Pis have a little bit of an issue with the SD cards that they, they store the information on, because they write so often to them. There is solid-state storage available, but the form factor, I'm not sure, those would be compatible with everything the teachers need, Microsoft Office mainly. We would like to have the Raspberry Pi workstations back in this room. When we replace the workstations in here, we're planning on going with something like a Linux open-source solution.
If the risk is sounding stupid, what exactly is Raspberry? I mean, I know what Raspberry Pi is.
Raspberry Pi, it's a, it is a, it's called a computer on a chip or a computer on a board, it's a very small, it's about the size of a deck of cards, generally costs around $35 to $40 actually, and they make a Pi Zero model that's about, a little larger than a sticker or a pack of gum. That one generally costs 20 to 25, I believe, so far cheaper, but they're a little bit limited, the Linux operating system has some limitations.
And you need to have a lot, a lot of, everything's pulled from the cloud, right? So you have to...
A lot of storage.
Yeah, but you create a, create a VM environment, so they have their own desktop in the cloud, and that's where they're working off of, so...
Right, yep, and you can virtualize a lot of the desktops and have them just sign in through that, through that gateway to get to the virtualized desktop.
It just saves a lot of...
Yep.
We run at our place, because it's, everybody runs off of VM, so...
Yep, and we do have a virtual environment in-house, so we could do a hybrid cloud solution, which is what I would prefer. We're consistently seeing issues with Amazon web hosting. Our Edmentum product has a lot of connection issues, and it's, it's not in our network, it's downstream at, at the web host. We had an outage today that was a web host out in Colorado, which is why I'm reluctant to change our phones to web hosting, I know there's a big push for that, but should our internet connection go down, our phone network still works, you can still call building to building, you can still communicate, so I'm a big fan of having some of that hardware in-house. So the... So the last exciting thing I have is backups. When I came here, our backup solution was a Synology external device. It was actually taken apart and on the third floor of the old Board Office. We're now hosting backups in the cloud. We have external encrypted hard drives onsite. Those are air gaps, so they're not connected to the network. And we're trying to back up at least 60 days of data and potentially more, depending on storage space. So the reason we do that is if a hacker gets in our network and has some malware dormant in the backups, we don't go to that and then reinstall that infected software. So we can roll back to a known good date and still recover as much as possible. So that is mostly offsite in the Michigan Data Hub, which is good. That's where we want our testing data. The state of Michigan has an excellent hosting site for that, and their cybersecurity setup is, it's fantastic.
So anticipate any requests for additional Chromebooks next year?
We do have a good amount of Chromebooks that we have to process. Through the ECF grant, we received 800, and we're working on processing those, waiting on cases right now, which puts us in a pretty good place for the next school year. I think we're set on Chromebooks for the next school year. And then probably back to the normal 200 to 400 Chromebooks per year.
So you don't anticipate, I mean, again, you never know what happens, but you don't anticipate needing Chromebooks next year?
It's tough to say until we recall all the devices this summer.
Right.
Evaluate, catalog, to know where we're really going to be. Conservative estimate says we should have enough devices to get us through the end of the next school year.
And you're having all the Chromebooks come back?
That is our goal, yes.
How's staffing?
I think we're good. You know, we could always use more people.
I see that smile. That means something.
It's a little rough. We could always use more people. Looking forward to some summer help. I had a discussion with Rick today. He's generously offered us some summer help, which will help us get through all of those Chromebooks to accurately evaluate, catalog, and track all that information.
And what type of summer help are these, you're looking for internships or?
It's hopefully two paid part-time positions.
High school students or no?
A previous high school student. I have to reach out and see if she's interested in coming back. She helped us last year. And then a current high school student.
So you have people identified already?
Yes.
Do seniors, I know that typically it was, I mean, they've had that Chromebook for a long time, but do they turn their Chromebooks in? Is there the opportunity for them so that would reduce, you know, I mean, if they had a newer one, I mean, do we collect from them?
We do currently because of the device crunch caused by COVID, because we needed, when this started, we needed everything that we had. So prior to that, we were selling Chromebooks to seniors. And they had an option to buy that Chromebook as they left the district. We stopped doing that, though, because we needed every device that we could find.
So they give back, just like everybody else?
Yes.
How many people actually bought them?
It only happened once since I've been here, and I believe it was around 50.
50 people.
50 that bought them.
But everybody gives them back every year, right?
Yeah.
They don't keep them.
They're supposed to.
So... Last summer was the first year we have taken everything back.
Last summer was the first time.
Yes.
And we plan to do that again this summer.
We do.
But you'll reissue the same one, like I would get the same one I turned in, right?
That is our goal this year. Last year, we did not have the resources to do that. This year, we will distribute them back out to the student who had it.
And asset tracking tool will help with that.
It absolutely will. Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Budget Committee, Christie Brooks?
So the Budget Committee, we just met last Wednesday. And we were blessed to have Ben, Devin, and Plant Moran with us. It was a full boat. We talked about the bus contract. I think we're going to discuss that further in another Budget Committee. Is that the plan? When is, when do we have to make a decision on that?
We'll probably bring it to the Board as a discussion item next meeting, ask for clarifications or information.
And what was that?
Buses?
Our bus contract.
Transportation contract.
Sorry, I'm a little stuffy.
No, no.
And Devin talked to us about, we had some questions with the curriculum, if our system would support it. And Devin assured us that it would. He also told us that we would need some upgrades in three to five years regardless, but that everything that we have right now would run with what is in place. And that includes if we add new social studies, science, that sort of thing. So we should be good with all of that. And then the rest of it we talked about is already on our discussion items. So I will, I'll let Rick handle that portion with the Plant Moran and refunding that sort of thing.
Okay, so what about the funding of the ELA curriculum?
We did not discuss that. We did?
Kelly went through how it would be funded.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You were there, weren't you? Kelly was with us virtually because she was sick last week. That's right. I didn't, and I do actually have you on here, just down at the bottom. So the 11T funds can cover some items. And kind of the same thing we normally have to do, shift a few things around to make it work better. And that was kind of the goal, I think, was those 11T funds would be utilized for some of that.
I think, I think it was, for two years, 11T funds could be used for it. And then it'll come out of general fund after that.
So for the first two years, the 11T fund, now is that the Esser?
That's part of Esser.
It's part of Esser, yes.
So is it all 11T is Esser or?
So it's common.
11T is the one that's the most restrictive.
It's the most restrictive. So I'm actually shifting something from Esser 3, that's all 100% special edge, into 11T, which would be allowable because it's so restrictive. And then freeing up Esser 3 monies for the curriculum for two years.
I think the, I think the key point was, there was a question if we were just identifying, but we weren't earmarking. So Kelly explained to us in the Budget Committee that, no, she's not like doubling up on Esser 2 or Esser 3 funds, that what she, what was presented in the proposal for ELA was what was still available in the Esser Fund with some of the shifts.
So for the first two years, we'll take it out of the 11T or Esser money. And after that, it'll come from the general fund? And the money that, I mean, last, I have it here someplace, but it's really divided by five? It's the same amount of money every year?
Right.
Correct.
It's like 109,000 this year.
Right.
In terms of the hit to the budget, yes.
Yeah, for the budget. Cash flow wise, it's, you know, all upfront. The hit to the budgets, spread over five years.
You can't, you can't expense, you can't expense all of it one year. You've got to do it each year you use it, but we have to pay for it all upfront, so.
So it's not, you're not making payments out. We're going to pay the 500,000 now, and then we're going to expense it.
Yeah.
I guess we should be thankful we had these 11T funds.
It's going to be an accrued expense.
What's that?
It's going to be an accrued expense, so it'll show up on the balance sheet.
Right. And the Budget Committee feels...
How good about that?
Feels good that we can afford it.
I mean, when you're looking at, you know, a 28, $30 million budget, 110,000 dollars a year for a good ELA.
I'm glad you're saying that. I just wanted to make sure, if we're going to record and say we...
And if we can't read and write, we can, the heart can't do any other curriculum.
Well, and Kelly, longer term, is going to work on some forecasting tools for us to kind of see, as we add these new, these other new curriculums that we haven't added for a long time as well. So we're going to have probably at least one year where all of them are in the budget, I would imagine. So she's, she's working on that. But yeah, we felt like what was, what was planned for the ELA curriculum, which I think is math and ELA were the two, I think, that we were most concerned about. It should be covered and taken care of.
And we, you know, the other thing is, we've always said we want teacher-led curriculum. You know, Megan took the lead on it, but she got all the teachers involved and so forth, and this is what they recommended. And so, I mean, they're the experts in the field, and we, I think we need to listen to them.
Yeah, make sure we pay for it.
We'll figure out a way.
All right.
We'll sell cookies if we have to.
Buy cookies.
Good. Anything else? Any other questions for the Budget Committee? Thank you very much. Discussion items. So first, on the discussion items, we're going to talk about the bond result and future options. I have Rick as a few statements. And then what I'd like to do is after Rick talks about our options, I think, you know, just to make sure everyone on the Board gets a chance, I'd like to just go around and everybody give their opinion on this whole thing. And then we can have a discussion afterwards. But I think it's really important that we all get a chance to voice our position on this. And then, and then I'm not, I don't want to limit the discussion at all, I just want to make sure we all do that, okay?
Pass those around. Kelly already has one. So coming around right now, I didn't want to just speak about it. I wanted to make sure that each of you had it in writing to consider it. These are three potential options. As you know, the result of the bond vote was not in our favor. Lost it by just under 200 votes. So now the Board needs to consider what's next. Choice, item number one would be to do nothing, let the current bond expire, and address our current needs assessment through general fund dollars. A couple of things about that, and there are more positives and negatives to each of these, but I'm pointing out some obvious ones. First of all, using general fund money to cover all infrastructure needs, and we're getting a price tag put together to give you more information, will negatively impact our ability to provide future programming, to provide future pay increases, and facility upgrades. Only bare minimum repairs would be made, and only in relatively small chunks, using general fund money. Choice number two is to go back to the voters in November and try again. That would be done with no large changes to the overall program, a short survey to gather input that will allow minor program changes, and inform campaign strategy. Also, no election costs in November because there's another election going on. We would need the Treasury application to be ready for either a June 24th or a July 8th presentation. So being the 9th of May, we would be extremely limited in the amount of time we would take. So gathering information, having a survey, going back to the Building Futures Committee would be difficult, if not impossible, in that short amount of time.
And just say, when we go to the Treasury Committee, we have to say, this is what we're asking for. It has to be defined.
The Treasury application is very detailed.
So there's no changing after that?
You can't deviate, deviate from it after you've got approval from Treasury. So last year...
From what you're going to spend the money on?
Yeah, last year, you remember, we went to, we had our Treasury meeting in December for the May ballot issue. So there is that longer lag time, even though there are, there's six months between now and what would be the vote in November. There's only about a month and a half before we have to have the proposal ready. So that is a potential challenge with going back in November. Option three would be to wait until May of 2023. This would allow for the largest amount of feedback collection and modifications to the overall program. It would be a special election, and therefore, all of the cost would be ours. My recommendation is to try again in November with alterations to the campaign and minor program changes based on a small district-prepared survey, and possibly one community forum for folks to give feedback. I believe that we could realistically do that in the next four or five weeks. We would also have to provide time for Trune and TNP to prepare the bond application. So we can't take right up until the 24th of June. We've got to give them a couple of weeks, so.
So the July 8th is if we're not going to do it till next year?
July 8th, one of the problems with July 8th is that TNP can't be at the interview. They don't have to be there, but they want to be a part of it. So they're asking for a June 24th.
Okay, so that's for either vote date, June, okay.
Yes. For, in order to get on the November ballot, to get an appointment, these are the appointment dates the Treasury has available right now.
Okay, so if it's May, it will be later than that. Okay.
If, if the Board decides to wait until May, then we have from now until December to take a look at the program and see if there's any changes that we want to implement. If we're going to go for a November issue, if that's what the Board decides to do, then we have to be ready by the middle of June. So we have roughly four and a half weeks to be ready with whatever we're going to present. Essentially, what the Board would be saying by going in November is, we're not looking at major changes to the program that was just voted on. We would want some input to address possibly some campaign strategies and minor changes to the program. But in general, we like what we presented, and we want to go back and try again. That, if you go with that option, that's really your best choice. So again, my advice is, is to go back, try again in November. There's, there are positives and negatives with whatever date you choose. I think one of the strong positives is that it's a, it's an election that doesn't cost the district any money. And I think that that is responsible for the Board to look at. Historically, there's, there's varying amounts of data on school bond elections in November. There'll be a contested governor campaign that you'll contend with, potentially higher voter turnout. But, you know, all of those things considered, I still recommend going back for a November issue with minor changes to the program and new campaign strategy, which, which I would report to the Board on frequently.
Okay. I don't care who, I mean, I know who goes first. I just want to go in order to somebody, whoever decides to go first, and we'll set the order from there. But just give your thoughts on this, the whole situation. So, do you want to go first?
Can I make a recommendation? Since Mrs. Brooks, myself, and Mr. Simpson already had some discussion in the Budget Committee, could we hear from Ms. Tomlin and Mr. Lewis first, and maybe Mr. Lewis can go around?
We can start this way.
And you. You know everything that we've been on the board before.
No worries. Mary, do you mind starting?
I guess not.
Well, we can start with Greg, if you don't mind.
I, I'm all for going for it in November, and again, in May if we have to, because we just really have to get the word out that, I want to get the buy-in from, from all the stakeholders, maybe more so. We'll talk about strategy later. But I just think it's what's best for kids. And that's just the way I feel. I would definitely want to go back in November with minor tweaks, as everything basically Rick said. That's pretty much it.
I would, I'm a fan of November. I just, my concern would be, how do we get those surveys out? Who do we get to? How do we get, who do we get them to? And how fast can you accumulate that data? And I'm assuming the Board will be kept involved with that. Because I think we need, we need to, I need to see a timeline, an outline with times on that, to see how that's going to happen. Just to just charge through it and throw out the same thing again, I'm not sure that's, I mean, I voted on this past time by, you know, relatively close margin, but I'd love to know what the sticking points were for people.
Right. Yeah, we definitely want to gather that information. My, my experience through COVID with surveys is that 90% of your responses come in the first hour. So you don't need to let a survey sit for two weeks.
No.
You can put it out Friday and have your information collected.
You're liable to get more if you put a shorter deadline. I typically leave those go, and I don't get back.
If we put it out on a Friday lunchtime and put a stop time around lunchtime Monday, we'll have all the information.
This will be random group of voters or?
Well, we'll try to get it to as many citizens as we can. We know that we have around 3,000 emails of our own families. We would try to access more email addresses possibly through the city that would, you know, get other people who don't necessarily have somebody in school to be able to give us feedback.
And then we talked about a town hall, too.
Gathering information from the survey is, is pretty easy. Gathering information from the survey is, is pretty easy. Having a town hall discussion is, is fine. I think it's a strength area for me. I just need to get 200 or 300 people in that.
Again, let's just talk, and we're talking to Greg.
So I obviously feel that November is good as well. I feel like with the number one, you know, we want our teachers to be paid and we don't, in a, in a good salary. And number one points out that we're not going to have the money to, you know, keep advancing our curriculum and paying our teachers and our administration at a competitive rate in a very difficult economy where people get poached easily. So that is something really important to me. I do agree with Greg, though. I feel like it has to be a different kind of campaign, and I'm sure you can, you know, come up with all kinds of ideas for that. But I think our community needs to know that that would be a great reduction for what we could do for students in terms of curriculum and with our staff.
All right. I want to accept the question. So I, I agree, we absolutely have to do something, right? I'm not a fan of the first item that, the do nothing is not on my list. I feel like we should go back in November. I think the way Rick laid it out, minor changes, I mean, I think that, you know, we were presented from the community, and, and we've heard from the community, so we can do some minor tweaking. But I think we need to continue, this is important. As elected officials, we're supposed to, you know, do what's best for students, and we're not going to do, I mean, we're going to let the public decide, but we need to present to the, to the public what we feel is best for the students. So I feel like we need to go with November. We don't want to pay for the election in May again, and I think the more people vote, the better.
I think the turnout will help, hopefully.
Tim?
I'm all in favor for the November. I don't like losing. So, and I think it would send a bad message if we did nothing. So, I mean, it's time, you know, we got kids, they're not looking up to us, but we are role models, and if we did nothing, we got to get back out there and get her done. So we fell down, we'll get back up. There's another round to go. So I think November is the time.
Yeah, I agree with November. The constituency that I've talked to since the election, from the, from the parents in the school district, I think if we did nothing, or we waited until May, they would feel a little betrayed or upset by us. They were very, very excited, I think, in general with the proposal. And then the other constituents that I talked to, I think they, they were educated enough that if we took too long to continue to educate, it might actually not work in our favor as well. So I think from that perspective, and, and we can't not do something. It was a big bond and a big proposal, and if we didn't mean it, we shouldn't have put it on this May's ballot to begin with. So I'm, I'm for November.
November, real easy.
George's week.
It's kind of like me.
All right. So now we, I guess, I don't know how much discussion there is on this, right? I mean, and, there is not an action item to vote on this, although we can, we can modify the rules and modify and put that on. Now, before we do that, I guess I just want to make, now, I asked everybody individually to talk, but if, does anybody have any questions about, again, we're not talking about what, the strategy so much, but just the fact of doing this, I'm not, and we want to, we can't add an action item. We would do that now, right? We can add that now? If that's what the-
Some point before moving to action items, you would have to add it.
Okay, we can do it now, or we can do it beginning of action items?
I do have just one kind of procedural question. Do we know when absentee ballots go out for November? Is that why we have the kind of June-July date?
Until, September.
I think that's when the application goes out.
The summer with which to work.
I think they get mailed out in October. The application, the application to get it added.
I mean, the real, the real issue is get in front of the Treasury Committee. That's the real binding issue. We got to get that done. So we'll have, if we decide to go in November, which it sounds like the Board has most, you know, amount of support for that, then we will start working really hard, really quick, on what we're going to ask for. So, do you want to make a motion? Or do you want to wait?
When we talk, are we done with the discussion?
Do we have any more discussion?
We do. Well, not on this topic, not on this topic.
I move that we-
Bond refunding.
We have to suspend the rule. That's our first motion.
I would move that we suspend the rules to allow this item to be placed on the action item.
Second?
We moved a second to suspend the rules, that we can take a vote to put this item on the-
In November.
We can put this November on the, in the action items. Roll call vote, Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlin?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we are going to suspend the rules. Now, need a motion to add it.
I move to add a vote to this evening's action items related to putting the bond issue on the November 2022 ballot.
Second?
We moved seconded to put the, the vote for the November election for the bond into the action for today's meeting. Roll call vote, Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlin?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we have added the bond vote for the November election. All right. Second issue, did I, did we pass those, is the bond refunding discussion. I mean, this really, if we had decided to do nothing, this, we would not have needed to talk about this, right?
Not necessarily, although that argument could be made that it would still be financially responsible. So I'll read through this. Again, these are my, my thoughts on options for the district, and then a recommendation. So in terms of refunding the current bond, there's two choices. One would be to let the current rate of 7.2 mils be reduced by 3.6 mils, or half, this coming June 30th, 2022. We would return to voters in November based on the discussion with a new millage proposal of 3.6 mils and a renewal of 3.6 mils to capture all 75 million in the current program. Issues with this, first of all, on the positive side, this immediate tax savings to property owners for their summer 2022 bill. On the downside, statistics show that the rate of approval for new millage over zero increased issues is 57% successful compared to 92% when it's a zero increase. Also, there would be very complicated ballot language in asking for new millage and a continuation of old millage. Could be very confusing. Item two would be to refund the current bonds now. The current rate of 7.2 mils remains intact for a November or a May election, and allows for all 75 million to be captured with zero increase. This also reduces the interest rate of the bonds and shortens the term. We're currently paying 5% interest, we would be paying 3% interest on the new bond rate. The downside would be no immediate tax relief for citizens.
So, wait a minute, you're, this would allow 75 million to be captured?
Both of them.
Both of them would, if you're interested in keeping the program the way that it is, then the assumption is that we have to capture the full 75 million. In order to do that with refunding the bond, then we would just keep the rate at 7.2 mils and carry that forward until June of 2023. And it would allow us, whether, whether there was a November or a May election, to capture all 75 million dollars.
So if we do this, and the election is not successful in November, then it rolls off then?
It does not. It, it holds until June of '23.
Well, okay, it rolls off in June of '23.
It saves like half a million dollars, something close to that.
There is detailed information based on the email that was sent today, where we, we talked to PFM and Trune about what the actual savings would be, so.
And that's what you meant by us being fiscally responsible, even if, you know, even if we wouldn't have gone back for November.
Regardless, because it does, it shortens the term and lowers the interest rate. So my advice is to refund the bonds now, lower the interest rate, shorten the term, and return to voters with a zero increase bond proposal with much simplified language.
And either way, your savings of half a million.
Including the savings over the term of the bond. Again, in some, a couple of you mentioned, you know, the responsibility of the Board is to students. That, that is my primary focus whenever I give the Board advice. I'm not an elected official, I'm a hired official, and, and my job is to advise the Board based on what I believe is best for our students and our families. So that is the basis for my advice. And I, and I feel that it's sound advice. I think that it does have savings to it either way, but it does allow us to recapture that with really no change to the ballot language over what was just previously proposed. So that's my recommendation.
Okay. And again, I think I'd like to go around here, everybody's input. I don't care who starts here.
I start again. To me, it seems like a no-brainer either way, whether the bond passes or doesn't pass. It seems like we need to refund. That's a fiscally responsible thing to do, and it would make the language a lot clearer, and so I'm all for it.
I'm making notes.
Might as well go in the same order.
Greg?
So if we, if we, so what you're asked us to do is to just, oh, basically, we're going to say that, we're going to pretend like we voted, like the bond just got voted yes for a year. Is that what you're telling me?
No.
No.
Because we're not cutting that. We're, we, as seven elected officials, are going to say, we think the right thing to do is up your taxes for another year.
No, keep them the same and refinance and lower the interest. So in the long run, you save a half a million dollars. So in the long run, we pay less.
Right. Over the term of the bond, each taxpayer will pay less in the end. If, if there is a negative election result in November and another negative election result in May, then the term of the bond and the interest rate is still less money paid out over the time. You're still saving people money in the long run. You're just not lowering their 2022 tax bill. And you're allowing the bond to extend at the 7.2 mils for another year.
So you're remortgaging your house, and instead of 10 more years, you only have seven or eight? And instead of paying 20,000 in interest, you pay 10?
But if you don't, if you don't, if you let the 3.6 mils roll off, that, every home, every taxpayer is saving money for every year.
But they still pay more than they would if you refinanced.
Oh, wait, now, listen, we're not, we're not, I mean-
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand.
I understand that, but, and that's fine. I just want to get into a big debate.
Yeah. The, the do nothing, and the, yes, half of the 7.2 will dissolve, and the immediate impact will be that amount of savings to each taxpayer. And that would start now. As I said, the challenge for us would be to explain bond language that's now splitting things in half. Because what we talked about tonight, or at least what I heard, was the desire to still capture the 75 million. So in order to do that, the bond language would have to be split. They would be voting yes for a new 3.6, which everybody here knows is old 3.6. But, but for voters, we would have to state that on the ballot, because it would be a new issue of 3.6 mils. And then an extension of the other 3.6, 3.6 that we would still owe on. That's what I see as a big complicating factor, is the hard to understand, hard to explain bond language in a short time period that we're trying to campaign and gather more yes voters. So like I said, it's a challenge, it's not undoable, but my recommendation is to simplify it.
So Greg, do you want to comment now, or not?
No, I'll think about it for a minute. But I, well, I guess, so my, my question still is, the voters just voted to let the 3.6 mils roll off, and we, as a body of seven, can reinstate that?
No, they, they voted to not pass the bond.
Right.
Fiscally, being, being fiscally responsible, we should still change the, go with the lower, the interest rate. I mean, would you want to pay higher interest?
No.
No. So being fiscally responsible, whether it passes or doesn't pass, we should change the interest rate from five, we should, to three, and save the taxpayers a half million.
I don't know the mind of every voter. We have had some conversations, each of us in small groups or individually, about what our theories are. But regardless of that, they didn't like this aspect or that, or the, some people maybe didn't like the roofline conversation from 25 years ago. I, I don't know what people hang on to. I just know that today, sitting here, this group of people has to decide to do what's best for our students now and in the future. And you have to weigh that against whether or not the taxpayers support that. It's a difficult choice, but, but that's where you are in your position on the Board. There's, there's what's best for our students, and what's best, or at least appears to be in the interest of the taxpayers. What do you do? My recommendation is based on what I think is best for students.
I want, okay, I really want to get through this. So do you have, you, you're not, you don't have any other further comment?
Yeah, I don't think I can, I don't think I can vote to extend the bond, or to roll that. The 3.6 have to roll off. I think that was a key point, what we just, why we just voted. I mean, we wanted to get 75 million, but we were asking people to not take the roll back, and that didn't pass. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to do, I'm not going to tell people I got to pay 3.6 mils that they just voted down.
Okay, Mary?
I am conflicted, because we have a long history here to come see with knowledges, and that bears on my decision. I won't go into all of it, because it's long. I understand the 5%, the 3%, that, that is an interesting thing. I have to think about that. I feel like voters are expecting us to have that 3.6 mil back. The 5% and 3% clouds it a bit for me, and then, and the fact that it's simpler. So I, I have to think on it. I don't have a firm answer, but I'm inclined to think that we have to give them the 3.6 mil back.
Again, just making notes here. All right. I was next, so I will go next. I mean, I still, now, I asked this, this morning for the understanding, and I was very, very quickly before I came here, I got the message. And I, so I still understand where the half a million dollar comes from. I don't understand the math. So therefore, it's hard for me. Huh?
Probably from the lower percent rate.
Okay. Well, I don't, I didn't see it. I don't understand it. In my mind, option B is still a tax the voters did not approve. They approved the tax 20, whatever, plus years ago, that we're currently under, and they did not approve this tax we asked for there. I don't, I, I've had other people tell me, you got to do what's best for students. I don't understand what, how rolling this, I mean, doing 3% versus 5%, how that gets to the, gets, and impacts the students. I mean, the, the public has told us, they, they told us 20-plus years ago, they're willing to pay the bond as exists. If we can refinance that without raising their taxes, we should refinance that. I don't understand why we, why we have to raise our taxes for a year to refinance it. So my question would be, go refinance it and don't raise your taxes for a year, what it is. But I, I just cannot find in my, I mean, Mary said it best. We have a long history in this town of, of voters doing one thing, and then the Board sometimes doing the other. And I, I personally won't, I can't support that. Now, the reason is, this is not a tax the voters have approved, and I won't support it. Next was Tim.
I can't support it either. You know, Tony, you touched on it. You know, there's been times You know, there's been times where the board has gone against the public opinion on things. And, you know, and if this is a really good, I believe this is a really good bond issue for us. Okay, this new school and all the programs with it. And if it's really good, then we got to get out there and show everybody how good it is. And if it's a little bit harder uphill climb, that's fine. It's, it'll make it more rewarding at the end. But at the end of the day, the voters said no. And if we go against the voters, I just don't feel you'll ever get a bond passed in the next 20 years in this town. So I really don't. And, and they're still talking about the high school field, so.
Football stadium.
Yeah, football field, yeah, sorry. So, so I just don't, I just can't vote for it, not to refund these bonds.
Lynn was next.
I'm an appointee, but as an appointee, you sit in an elected seat. So I, I actually have a nuanced view of doing what's best for children. Taxpayers vote us into these seats or give power to appoint into these seats to utilize the resources that they pay to the general good and use and be stewards of that, of what we have for the betterment of, of the students. And so, and when I look at the math, and Kelly, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears like, so we, we obtain half a million dollars in savings from interest. What this actually is doing is saying, if we extend the 7.2 mils in this refund until we can get the new bond covered, we essentially are asking the taxpayers to pay the 7.2s. It looks like maybe for an additional year because we're going to pay early, right? We're going to pay in 2023 versus 2028. The majority of it looks, 2028, 2029 look to be. So we're essentially pulling up the 2028, 2029 payments up to 2023. Whereas if we let the taxes go down to 3.6 mils now and, and a bond does not pass in November, or if we try a third time, if it doesn't pass in November and May, that just means that they're going to be paying for it realistically five to six months, five to six years longer. But the whole concept of millages and how they get paid is a very complex thing to explain, and I, I'm not good at it. So, you know, I, I am not from here. I am a, a new person to town, and I'm very thankful for how well people have treated myself and my family in this town. I, I have a really, it's different asking for a renewal before the next tax payment comes out, in my opinion, than asking, than forcing one on after they know that the tax bill is going to change. So I'm kind of like Mary, I'm having a hard time making a, a decision logically. I, I wish we had more time to discuss it because then we could maybe share that. If, if we refund the bond and you're benefit, you're going to pay all this debt back earlier. But I don't think we have that. So I'm, I'm still, I, I might be down to the vote on, on this one. I, I have a hard time refunding because it's essentially doubling the millage as of June 30th to our taxpayers. And while it was not a mandate, we, we didn't lose by a huge margin. It's still, it was an excellent turnout, and I think there, there was a message about, about what they expected us to do and whether it was about the story about the bond or it was their feelings about taxes or it was their trust of the boards in the past or whatever, whatever that reason is, I'm not going into that. They still expected, you know, June 30th, when they voted, that if they voted no, there was a chance that their taxes go down in half. And so I think, you know, it's, it's, I, I lean no to refunding. And that's tough for me to say because if you look at the debt payment story, it's a much better debt payment story. But I, I feel like the choice for a lot of voters going in last Tuesday was 7.2 or half of 7.2. And they chose half of 7.2. So I'm, I, I struggle like Mary on this one, probably for different reasons, but.
Becky?
I disagree. The, the voters put us here to make decisions that represent them. And I don't know, so my feeling, based on what I've talked to folks, is not necessarily that they were against the tax. They were against some of the things that it represented. So I would have refunded it. I would keep that on there and, and would go for the millage in November and then show better how, there was a lot of concern about the old millage and what happened to that. And show better how that gets paid off and gets taken care of and now with half a million less. So that's my two cents. I don't think people were so much looking for the, there was a few people, of course, looking for a tax reduction, but I don't think that was the message. I think the message was they wanted to see a different, different concept with some of the items.
Didn't we refinance, like, isn't it common to kind of like refinance and go down with a lower interest rate as these bonds move forward?
Right. If you recall, in February of 2021, the, the board refinanced a portion of the 2015. And that was also a refunding bond series where we, again, saved the taxpayers a little over a half a million dollars and knocked a year off the debt obligation. If you chose to refund again this evening or not, it would again be a half a million dollar savings to your taxpayers and not two years off the debt obligation. So should the, the new bond pass, there'd be a five-year period where it would remain at 7.2 mils, but then it would drop off versus last time we went to the, you know, it would have been seven years at 7.2 mils.
So why can't we just refinance the 3.6?
We are.
No, why, why do we have to, why do we, the, the second 3.6? Why can't we just refinance that?
So.
Again, without, without asking for more money for a year, why can't we just refinance what's left?
Well, this is what this is doing. So this is refinancing.
Why can't we refinance without charging more for a year?
There's two different bonds, right?
Well, right now, the, the district has one bond. They have the 250, the 2015 refunding bond, which, which is approximately 12 million dollars in debt obligation over a seven-year period at a 5% interest rate. This evening, you're discussing whether you're refunding a portion of that, where then the taxpayers, again, would see a, a half a million dollar savings and a two-year reduction in the debt obligation. But yes, it would keep the mils at 7.2 mils for another year. And then going up for election in November, that's a separate bond.
But why, why can't, why do we have to raise their taxes now? Why can't we just refinance the part that's not rolling off? Why does it have to come with an increase in taxes?
Well, this is not an increase in taxes. It would be a renewed 7.2.
The people see it as they're paying more taxes in the next year.
No, they're not paying less, but they're saving $500,000 and they're going to pay two years shy of the seven years. So to me, it's totally irresponsible to not do the right thing financially.
I still would like somebody to answer my question.
Yeah.
And I'm not getting my question answered.
Right now, there's a 12 million dollar debt obligation that we're paying, that there's a scheduled debt schedule to pay it off over seven years.
Right. And, and, and that.
This would make it then five years and we'd pay approximately 11.5.
Why can't we make it one year and pay, not have the taxpayers pay more money on the next two tax payments? Why does it have to come, why does the refinancing have to come with continued high taxes?
Because we're, what we're doing with refunding, you're taking the payments that are in the 2028 year and the 2029 year. Remember I said we were reducing the number of years of the debt and we're moving them forward.
But that's not a refinancing, then that's just shifting of funds. We're talking about 3% versus 5%. Why can't I get 3% on the rest of that, that 12 million dollar debt?
Well, that's what we're doing, then this would make it from five to three.
Let me ask a question again. Why can't I get that 3% rate on the rest of that, not starting immediately without having to put on another year of high taxes?
Well, because there's no one in the bond market that would buy the bond at 5%. This, this restructure that so that now we can go to the new bond market and say, hey, investors, I want you to buy this debt at 3% and then this is the structure.
Why won't they buy it that, why won't they buy it here? We know that for sure.
Because we're already locked into, to a mount.
I think, Tony, the answer is that with the current inflationary pressures and interest rate pressures that are being planned, in order to get the 3% rate, probably whoever gave us this proposal, you had to cut off those bottom two years and move.
So we have a proposal from somebody?
Well, what, PFM, they get some, they get what they call soft interest. You know, they, they talk to their investors and say, hey, if Tecumseh Public Schools did this, would you be interested? But those are just soft, yeah, we probably would be, likely be interested. But on the day of the bond sale, it's open to anyone. And then that's when the money, you know, when the money hits the, the table then. And that's when you're locked into a, a rate and terms.
But you're, we're going to save 500,000 to the district. But over the life of that, if we let the 3.6 roll off, the taxpayers are going to pay 2.4 million less. Is that correct? So it's really not a savings to the taxpayers, it's a savings to the district, but not to the taxpayers, not cash flow wise.
No, because the district, the taxpayers with the debt fund, all that money comes from taxes. The district doesn't pay any general fund dollars for that. It's not state funds. It is truly based on the property taxes and the, and the taxable value of your home and the mils collected. So when, when a district passes a bond, you are legally required to set the mils for whatever that debt obligation is for the year. So what we're doing is keeping it at 7.2 like the consistent years. We're rolling up, like I said, knocking off two years of the existing debt and saving the taxpayers, you know, a half a million dollars. Because remember I said, we owe 12 million, but if we refunded, then we'd owe approximately 11.5 million.
Maybe those.
So it truly is a tax savings, right, taxpayers?
It could have cost them a million dollars more had we not refinanced. So if we refinanced before, we refinance again. And it's, I think it's common practice when you have these bonds, when you can save money on interest, just like when we bought our house. We remortgaged two times.
So, so how much more money are we going to collect in the next year if we refund it? How much, how much more money are the taxpayers going to pay us in the next year?
The exact same they have.
Same 7.2 mils.
No, no, I want, I don't want, I want dollars.
May I, may I, maybe?
Well, it depends on the property value.
So if we look at the matrix that Kelly sent us, just put it in.
I think we've gone beyond the matrix at this point.
I know, but to put it in very simple terms, let's say the bond, the new bond doesn't pass in November. Say it goes away. Essentially, what extending the 7.2 mil for one year does is allows us to make a balloon payment essentially on our debt that then reduces the debt payment. So realistically, for the taxpayer, they're paying it sooner. If that makes sense. In, in the 3.6 mils that they're going to pay if we don't do this, they're just going to pay it
Longer.
Two years longer. And then we'll pay an additional $500,000 in interest. And, and please, Kelly, tell me if I'm interpreting.
I certainly understand the concept of paying a house off early. I get that. But I also know that it costs me, it costs me my house payment a month for all those years to do it. So we have to know how much more money, in order for you to give me these figures, you have to be able to tell me that this, the taxpayer is going to pay this much more money in the next year.
For a $200,000 house, if it's a $100,000 taxable value that we pay, saving 360.
And how many houses do we have in the?
Well.
No, she must, listen, if you're going to, if you're going to tell me we're saving a half million dollars, you must have enough information to calculate that.
If we don't do it and the bond passes, they'll have saved $360 once.
That's what they're going to.
Now, I think we're kind of getting into the strategy discussion.
If, if the house is a certain amount, that's a, that's a guesstimate of a property value. Yeah, I, I know the taxable value for Tecumseh Public School District as of May is, is a really large number. It's 667,421,332. How that equates to each individual home, I have no idea.
So if you take that.
But that's, that's the taxable value of.
Six, 600?
667,421. Yeah.
So you take that 677 million times 3.6 mils equals how much money?
No.
Because this is 2,402,717?
It's 6,674 times 3.6.
Yeah, the 2.4027.
So, so the taxpayers in the next year are going to give us 2.4 million dollars more. Right? They're going to give us 2.4 million dollars more of money they didn't vote for.
But they, they would have owed that anyway.
They owed at the end of the year.
They would have owed at the end.
That's right. But also, at the end of the year, we could have, we could have.
They still owe it. They're just, we're paying it off early.
But house values could go up. We could have new business in town, which means their load share of it could be down.
Absolutely. So when the district and the board passes the, the L4029, which is, which sets your, your, your tax millages for the, for the next year, it, it takes into account, you know, and looks at what is current property values? What, you know, what is, what is the current taxable value? Has your, your property value gone up? And if your property value goes up, then yes, the, the mils that the, the school district would need to collect to meet the debt obligation does go down. But, but the opposite is true too. If your home value goes down, well, then the mills that you need to collect to meet that debt obligation has to increase.
I think from a mathematical perspective, the discussion we're having right now is, and I'm sorry, this is very simplistic terms, car payment versus early mortgage payoff. So either we can reduce the payment, the perceived, the, because the 7.2, again, remember, is the ceiling. And to your point, Tony, we get a, we got, get a couple of good new businesses in that, that, you know, income, taxable income all comes to us as a community. We could, because there's a specific payment on the bond that we have to pay, that millage could go down. But we can't charge more than borrow up to is kind of the, the goal. So the real, just the mathematics, if you look at the matrix, and Kelly knows the way to my heart is matrix. The, basically, what refunding does says that we're asking the taxpayers to make the, the payment that would have come off of their property, whether they own it or not, in 2028, 2029 or not, and whatever businesses may be coming. We're asking them to let us make an early payment. Now, again, to my nuance of my role on the board, if, if I had been elected in November instead of appointed, right? Even though it wasn't a mandate, even though it wasn't a huge margin, there's still a majority of the people that chose to vote last Tuesday that are telling me, I don't want to pay 7.2 mils come June 30th, for whatever reason. Those are discussions we have later about how to pass a November bond issue. But that's, that's still where I'm kind of struggling is, not that I don't want to keep money coming into the district, but that, but I think it's very big, it's, it's just the mathematical thing is pay it early or let it go its normal way.
And I agree with everything except for two small words you used in your whole statement, okay? And you say, you said, we're asking them to let us do this.
Well, we're not asking them, we're telling them we're going to do it.
That's everything you said, except for that one word, asking.
Yeah, we're asking for forgiveness if we vote yes.
Right.
Or we're saying, we, we don't really care if you have to pay longer and you're going to pay more in the long run. We don't care if we save 500,000.
All the taxpayers that are here, then, we made that decision. We said we would pay the 7.2 mils till 2030 or whatever the year was.
But it's just like, it's financial responsibility. When your interest rates drop, I'm not going to keep paying a higher interest rate, even though I had to pay 2,000 to do whatever, you know, to get all my paperwork in. In eight months, I made up that two in savings on my mortgage, so.
But we don't get to decide that for individuals that went to the booth that they involved.
I, those individuals did not vote for the bond. They vote, I mean, they voted no on the bond. They didn't vote on financial fiscal responsibility on budgets and.
They voted for a, a ceiling of millages that allows us to borrow money. For whatever reason, they voted what they voted.
They voted no on the bond.
They voted no on 7.2 millage ceiling after June 30th. Yeah, no, but I mean.
Well, we don't even know what demographic. I mean, it could be very different in November. Maybe they'll vote no again. But by doing this, I think it's our fiscal responsibility to save another half a million dollars. I, I don't even know how that's a question, when we're sitting here worried about money and.
I, I agree with you, Suzanne, that there is a savings overall to the district and then to the taxpayers. and then to the taxpayers, because our money comes from.
But savings is a savings, I mean, that's a huge one.
But it's also, again, how, how we apply, how we utilize the taxpayers' money. And, and they told us last Tuesday that they do not want us to have a ceiling of 7.2 millage starting July.
The people that showed up told us, but there could be thousands of people that didn't vote.
But that is the beauty of a constitutional republic, you choose to vote. And so those that chose to vote get a say in the decision.
They got to say no on the bond.
Yeah.
But if we want to do something fiscally responsible by redoing it and saving a half a million dollars, I mean, to me, they didn't vote no on me saving them a half a million dollars.
And they didn't vote yes on it either.
They also didn't say, I'm willing to pay another 360.
But I got voted in.
Okay, that's right.
But they also didn't say, I'm, I'm willing to pay another 360 a year because.
Now, and then I get to not stop paying two years early. Don't leave that part out.
But how much have they paid? You gotta add those years up, so.
Money wise, it's saving money.
They're still going to save 2.4 million over the life of the, if we don't refund it right now, so.
Well, not really, they're just going to pay it, well.
I think that's very short sighted.
The property valuation of Tecumseh, whoever owns it. We'll still pay the same amount of principal on this bond, whether we vote to refund it tonight and we make that payment in 2023 or we make that payment in 2028 and 2029. But our constituents know better than we do at this table, whether or not they're going to be in that property valuation in 2023 or probably the majority of them will be in the property valuation for 2023. But whether they will be in the property valuation for 2028, 2029 is a toss up for any demographic in this community. And so they voted, I mean, they, the way the language was, that's, that's just the way it was. And I think what we're hearing now is just kind of a, a difference of maybe, I, I don't disagree that it's, it saves $500,000 in interest. If, if you look at it in totality between now and 2029, we're going to save half a million if we do this. But we don't have a full crystal ball. We may save this or have somebody, a, a business come in and, and help us save even more than that, you know, because we get more tax base. So I just, it, it's a way of looking, it's just two different views of how this plays out from the constituency perspective. But doesn't that answer your, I'm sorry, Tony, does that answer your?
I understand, I have my question answered. $2.4 million we're collecting, I get it. I understand everything about it.
Yeah.
But.
I understand your question.
My, my statement hasn't changed, I mean, from the beginning. I just wanted that $2.4 million number. And I didn't see it or get it in time. I was dealing with some other things. So I didn't have time to read your email that came in at whatever, 5 o'clock.
Can I ask the question then, after this discussion of the math? Does anyone's opinion a change, change at this board table at that discussion of the math?
Well.
Of the what?
I mean.
The discussion of.
Won't we take, won't we find that out at the board?
Yeah, I just, you know, does anybody want to make any other statements?
Oh, I guess that's, does anybody want to make any other statements? Or questions or anything else?
No, I think we should move on.
Have I objected to that?
No, sir.
All right, then we will move on. And listen, these are great discussions and I appreciate everybody listening, active listening and getting a chance to, I mean, it doesn't, you know, that's what's great thing about a board, right? So, all right, action items. First on the action item list is, uh, LISD budget.
Thanks for that list.
So we looked at this, we discussed this last meeting. Becky, Becky sent us some information, thank you. And I believe we're ready to go on this.
I move that.
Wait, Tim's, Tim's got.
Oh, Jim's got, that's right.
I hereby move to support.
You're the man.
Go ahead, Jim, sorry.
The ISD budget is presented at the April 25th, 2022 regular board meeting.
Support.
We moved and seconded to support the LISD budget has been presented at the last meeting. Uh, Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlin?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, uh, I believe Becky, you have some paperwork to fill out for that. You've got that, okay. All right.
I hereby move to not approve the bond refunding as presented at tonight's board meeting.
You're.
He's reading it wrong.
Well, he's making the motion.
I'm making the motion.
I'm not going to support you.
That's fine.
Don't wait for me.
That's fine. He, he, he read the motion.
Okay.
He can't.
I know.
Support. He can't vote against it. Uh, it's been moved second to not support the bond refunding as been, as been presented and discussed. Um, Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
No.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Oh, wait, I, that's to not. Not support.
Okay, good.
All right. Lewis, not, Moore?
Yes, oh, wait, 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 no.
Lewis, yes, Moore, no.
Right.
Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlin?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
No.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee, uh, Chair votes aye, we will not do the bond refunding. Um, Tim?
I hereby move to approve the purchase of the ELA curriculum proposal as presented at the April 25th, 2022 regular board meeting.
I second that.
We moved and seconded to support the ELA curriculum that was presented at the last board meeting. Um, Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlin?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we, we're getting some new, new ELA curriculum. All right, uh.
Yay.
Bond in November.
For me?
Oh, oh. It's not that, we added it.
Yeah, I hereby move to, uh, move the bond election to the November election, which I don't know the date of that, but, um, when the general election is.
Second.
Is that, is that motion okay?
Sounds good.
We moved and seconded to have a, uh, another bond proposal presented on the November general election. Uh, Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Tomlin?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, uh, uh, let's go on to district business consent, consent agenda.
I hereby move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the following items, minutes from the regular board meeting of April 25th, 2022.
Support.
Move the second to, to approve the consent agenda. Uh, roll call vote, Trustee Tomlin?
Aye.
Trustee Simpson?
Aye.
Trustee Moore?
Aye.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. Move on to superintendent report, Mr. Hildeley.
Okay, um, playground update. There was the newest email as of 3/19 today. Um, I think that I know, Mrs. Shirk, tell me if I'm wrong. The Herrick Park playground is complete. Including the ground cover.
And including ground cover and the end of the ball.
Okay.
Wow.
So we're good there. Um, Patterson ran into another snag. They, they got the parts that were missing the first time, but then when they unpackaged the slide, they found damage. So now the slide at Patterson has to be replaced. Um, so that'll extend when that one opens.
Should we play more volleyball in the meantime? I don't know.
So they can't, they cannot, they cannot put it together with the old slide.
Right, they're, they're at kind of a standstill right now while they, they wait for that item.
Can they like put up plywood or something to block the kids going down from where the slide was?
So it's not like it's still play.
They won't be able to put the ground cover in until everything's done.
It's a bummer.
So, uh, we'll keep you updated. We still want to do a ribbon cutting in each site and, and have some coverage and board members. Celebrated, it's, it just is running into some problems.
Who gets to be the first kid to go down the slide in each school?
Me. Mr. Hildeley.
Maybe, James.
Yeah.
Any more paper?
Mrs. Fulton is already, so. First.
I'll go with you.
Lighty.
Lighter, right. Um, teacher appreciation week was last week. It's, it's always difficult to decide when it falls in the middle of two board meetings, where we mention it, um, but we're mentioning it now. Last week was teacher appreciation week. Um, I told them in an email that I hope that they know that we appreciate them all year round, not just for a week in May. Um, they were provided some snacks on behalf of the district. Uh, I think just about every building enjoyed something every day, uh, from different groups. Uh, so thank you to the other groups who support our teachers. And I think in line with, uh, teacher appreciation, I also want to mention, and Tony, you had the, the article today.
It was actually Friday's paper.
From last week. Good news that we already shared with the board, um, our high school achieving US News and World's Report. Uh, top 100 list of schools in Michigan, high schools in Michigan. And, um, a big honor, uh, you know, for our county, we're the only school in Winaway County who's on that list, um, which makes us stand out. There's, there's some schools that we typically like to compare ourselves to who are ahead of us. So it gives us some targets for moving up that list and, uh, some of the things that are included in that. But, uh, great job to our teachers that is, uh, completely due to their efforts and coming out of some of the struggles, um, with teaching and learning that we've faced recently. It's, it's just great that they're making that kind of progress. So congratulations. Uh, it is, it's, it mentions the high school, but it's, it's something that the district celebrates because it's a, it's a K-12 honor to be on that list. So thank you, especially because of that information, uh, to our teachers. Um, some bond campaign thank yous. Um, first, you know, I'll say that you've presented me with quite a challenge by, by splitting that ballot language. Um, not insurmountable, but, um, we'll, we'll do what we can. Mr. Chase, you're here tonight, so I will, I will call you out publicly and say, we got to have teacher support this time around. And, and not that we didn't have support, we just didn't come and ask. Um, but, but we will be talking about how badly we need, um, all of our teachers to get on board because, um, and, and my least favorite part of campaigning is, is fear mongering. But we're, we're going to have to get real serious about the things that Devin talked about tonight, the things that we'll be looking at in terms of our needs assessment and Tom will be putting some dollar values to. And those needs don't go away just because the, the bond was turned down. They're, they're just accelerated because now we have to look at choosing between programming, salaries, um, and upgrades to just doing the bare minimum. And, and school districts who have to face that have, have real financial challenges. So we're going to, we're going to, uh, want a big, uh, supportive effort from all of our staff, including our teachers, our Mr. Chase. Uh, but some thank yous about this last one, first of all, um, 705, 1705 yes voters um, who heard the message loud and clear from the campaign and from the Building Futures Committee. Uh, we thank those people. Um, Katie Madison and George Lesko and, and Georgia's daughter-in-law Kate for their leadership and time spent on the yes committee. We'll be going back to those people to see if there's a way that they can help us again. And, and I have some people identified from this last campaign who I want to include because they were some people who had some very, uh, challenging questions and I think will be valuable to helping people understand what it is that we're trying to do. So we'll have, um, an increased amount of people on that campaign. Uh, within our organization, a few people, uh, Victor Pratt, our, our PR guy, does a lot of information. He's not a, he's not a self cheerleader. He's not out there, uh, telling everybody what he does, but, but Victor does a, a great deal, not only on our bond campaign, but to get information to people. Um, also Devin, uh, for, for the support that he gives to our website and his crew. A lot of this went out through technology, so thank you to that group. Uh, one teacher specifically I'll identify because she identified herself by writing a, a letter to the newspaper, that's Melissa Hilton, who, um, put a nice article in the paper in support of the issue. She also, when I, when I was doing the, the meet and greets, uh, she volunteered at her classroom as the acres site for the, the afternoon presentation because she said, you know, it doesn't do any good for you to give the presentation in the nicest looking, uh, part of every building, which is the library. Come down to the classroom where I can show people that our, our unit ventilators don't work and that, uh, the, you know, the sinks and some of the doors don't operate the proper way. And so, you know, just thanks to Melissa for extending yourself on that. And then I already mentioned the Building Futures Committee. It's, it started with a group of 40 people who, who all tackled this. Um, there were only a couple of meetings where all of them were together, but at some point, 40 different people, mostly from the community, uh, gave input on this plan. And, and we really thank them for getting involved. Um, I'll probably communicate to them at least one more time, uh, now that the, the, um, stage has been set for what's next, um, and, and try to get any input that they have, uh, for me about the program. Uh, but again, uh, going out in November, we're not looking at making major changes, just, uh, some final tweaks. So thank you to all that group. Um, they, they did a really great job in trying to get that message out and, and we'll see what we can do with, uh, the next round. Um, and then lastly, I just want to mention, uh, also, Mr. Chase is here. Um, we, I think we have a calendar set to bring to you. You'll notice it's on there for a discussion item next time. Couple of things that we have to get squared away before we put it on there or we're going to have it on there tonight. So, uh, it'd be nice, I think, if we, um, if we discuss that the next time and then maybe approve it just as the kids are going away for summer so we can, uh, send that calendar home. So that is all I have for my report.
Any questions for Mr. Hildeley? Thanks, thank you, Rick. All right, uh, items for next agenda, uh, we will have good news. As he mentioned, we'll, we'll look to discuss the district calendar. Uh, there are no carryover action items that I could see from this meeting, but I'm sure we'll have some. So moving to closing, we have, uh, public comment. Uh, so in conduct the open meeting act, uh, we will allow public, we have three, uh, uh, three minutes of, um, of public comment. Chase? All right, time begins now.
All right, uh, good evening and, uh, thank you for letting me take some of your time. Um, I first just want to thank, uh, Mr. Hildeley for his flexibility in our calendar talks. It was a really good conversation and he was very teacher focused in that, so thank you. Um, today, uh, I, I come to you as the union president for the Tecumseh Education Association. Um, I want to quickly run you through the timeline on a grievance that was filed, um, for the high school. Um, it's all kind of started near the beginning of the year and our conversations talking about increasing the cleanliness at the high school. Um, if you go down there, we were shared a cleaning schedule. It said that rooms should be swept once a week, bathroom should be cleaned, um, weekly. We were seeing that this wasn't happening. Um, and we take a lot of pride in our building and we want to make sure that, uh, this building is clean. Um, we met, uh, with Tom on October 22nd. Um, at this meeting, we kind of laid out some very bare minimum requirements that we were hoping to get. Um, rooms swept once a week, garbage is taken out daily and, um, surfaces wiped as, wiped as need, needed. Um, we, uh, weren't satisfied with the results, so back in October, we filed a grievance with Mr. Hawkins. Uh, we, after Rick and I talked, we restarted that grievance with Dennis Niles. Um, in December, this is also when the student sweeping program kind of was the inception of that.
We're going to order real quick here, is this a grievance that you're bringing to us?
Um, just an update on our, our, what we found recently.
Okay. Okay. Because I think grievances have to go through you before they come to us.
They already have.
Correct, it's gone through.
Okay, all right, so I didn't know that we had a grievance coming, so.
Mid, mid-December.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. We, we, I, I really want to say and make it clear that we are very, very thankful to principals Dennis Niles and Greg Dulson, they've done an awesome job with that student program, and this building wouldn't be in the shape that it is now without their program. So thank you to those two. We moved that grievance to the superintendent level in mid-December, and because we didn't see the results that we wanted, we ran this grievance on what we call a suspended timeline. It was a mutual agreement that said that we're willing to work together and not be tied to the number of days that are in the contract. Then on March 23, we met with Tom, there was also John Hacker, representative from the high school, and Mr. Hildery were there. At this point, they communicated with us that the expectation was sweeping once a week still, and we were hoping for better results than that. We were going to present at the 20, April 25 board meeting, we decided not to because the, Mr. Hildery had said that custodians had new technology that was supposed to help clean the floors better, and that we wanted to make sure that that student sweeping program was honored. So we decided to push to this meeting. The next thing you'll see is some results from surveys that we've taken with our members. At first, it was a smaller target group, upstairs, downstairs, north side, south side of the building. Can I extend my time for being interrupted?
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Only because, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So the latest ones that we've had, you can see, the numbers aren't quite where we want them to be, we have seen some improvement in the building, but we would like to extend our ask to you as a board for two words. One thing is consistency, we want this building as one of the kind of trademarks of our community to be something of pride and accountability, making sure that the people who are in charge are getting the job done that they need to get done. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I believe so.
One thing that I want to mention on his presentation, and all these dates are, are correct, in our calendar discussion last week, we, we ended by doing a walkthrough, does my camera?
Tony's hands stands up.
We did a walkthrough, I don't know, Mr. Chase, will we get into a dozen or maybe 15 classrooms?
Yeah.
It was our observation at that time that each of those rooms had been swept and all the trash was emptied on that particular day.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Board member comments, discussions?
I just want to publicly, I see, I follow the school Facebook, so, that Victor does and whatnot, and I loved it when I looked on Friday and I saw all those middle school kids with those sunflowers go home for their mom. And I remember that Mr. Bundis did that during the COVID year too, and he keeps that garden up at a minimal cost, and the city works with him, and I just think he goes above and beyond, and all the kids that work, and I saw that kids worked in the garden acres too, and I thought, now how cool is that? Because, you know, that's a great lifelong skill, and it gives them pride in their community, and who knows what that experience will bring for them later in their life in terms of giving.
Yes?
Yeah. First, I, I want to commend the board. I know we had a tough vote this evening, and I think we followed our norms well during that discussion, and I think it was a respectful discussion and a, a hard one, but I, I just want to commend my fellow board members on that, and I appreciate Kelly, it's Glenn putting together the information to kind of clear up some questions that we had had. And, you know, it, it was a disappointment. I feel very strongly that the things we were requesting in the bond, to be done by the bond, were very important to the district long-term, and so I look forward to the new strategy discussions of how we continue to educate our, our community about the needs that are solved through that bond, so.
I don't think there's a person on this board that didn't get here to try and make things better for us going forward, and I don't, I don't think anybody here is packing in saying, "Well, you know, one, done, we're going to print it up a lot and do a little harder, a little smarter on this thing." We need to get it passed.
The only thing I have is, I, I want to just, I brought the, I, I just want, I want to go back to this article, I'm from Friday's telegram. I mean, you know, we had, during this bond, we had members of the community come in here and ask us, "Are we doing better? What did the last bond do for us?" Right? How do we compare against our peers? You know, they, we had that, those questions in the public comment. And here's an independent, here's an independent news organization, as far as I know, I don't get this magazine, but that, that said we are doing better, and we are doing better than our peers, and not only are we doing better against our peers, we're doing better than the last time. If you read the article, it says we're doing better than last time they judged us.